Okay, good evening and welcome to the Town of Wareham Board of Selectmen's meeting for April 20th, 2021. May we have a roll call, please?
Yes, there are five selectmen present as well as town administrator Derek Sullivan. We will not have Mr. Bowen present with us this evening.
Very good. May we have the pledge of allegiance delivered by retired Chief Walczek?
Ah, there we are.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag
The United States
The United States of America To the republic for which it stands One nation
Under God
Indivisible
With liberty
Justice for all
Justice for all
Thank you, Joe.
Yes, thank you. We're gonna go right down to announcements and we're going to read a proclamation for our chief. And it goes as follows: Town of Wareham, 54 Marion Road, Wareham, Mass. Proclamation: Chief John Walczek. Whereas John Walczek was first employed by the Town of Wareham Police Department as a summer special police officer in May of 1987. Whereas John Walczek was hired as a full-time police officer in 1989, Promoted to sergeant in 2003, Promoted to lieutenant in 2010, Promoted to acting chief in 2018, And promoted to chief in 2020. Whereas John Walczek also served as a firefighter in the Town of Wareham from 1984 through 1987.
Ninety-seven.
John's service as a police officer and police chief is marked by his professional, courteous, and extreme dedication to his work and to the public. Whereas John Walczek has faithfully and honorably served the citizens of Wareham for 33 years. Whereas John Walczek worked his last shift as police chief on April 17th, 2021. Therefore, in recognition of the above facts, the Board of Selectmen congratulate Police Chief John Walczek for his decades of exemplary service to the town And hereby proclaim April 21st, 2021, as John Walczek Day. So proclaimed this 20th day of April 2021, Anno Domini, Board of Selectmen, Peter W. Titlebaum Chairman, Judith Whiteside Clerk, Alan H. Slavin, Patrick G. Troppiano, James N. Manise. Chief, congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you very much. And I, I, I thank you very much and I can't say enough, your support was very important to me and I thank, I thank you for that. And Derek, thank you for always being there for us and I really appreciate it. And I know Peter, I've been bugging you the last several weeks, several times a week for one thing or another, so thank you for that. I appreciate it.
No, and it's, you know, it's always been a professional but also a very friendly relationship and I'm grateful for that, as have the other people who've been chairman and the other board members and it's, uh, you know, we're, we're sad to see you go.
Thank you very much. It was an honor to serve Wareham, I mean that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Chief.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
John.
The pleasure was all ours and thank you for leaving the department in great shape. We turned over to a great leader, so thank you.
Derek, I'm afraid.
You're muted, John. You're muted. You're muted, sorry.
You leaving us?
Yeah.
Now you're officially retired.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thanks for everything, John. Okay, moving on, citizens' comments. Is there anyone who would like to speak to the board tonight? I see Diane Kenny has her hand raised, uh, so let's let her in, please.
Hi, I just have a quick question.
Sure.
The question of the tax rates has come up several times in the last couple of weeks at Board of Selectmen meetings and at the special town meeting. The answer that I've heard why we don't have the split tax rate is that we don't want to burden our smaller businesses, especially after the last year, which I heartily agree with. But after doing a little bit of research, I found out that we can actually do a split tax rate and offer small businesses exemptions. So I'm curious why we haven't done that.
I have not heard that.
Well, that's, we can't answer that tonight. We'll have to do some homework on that.
I can actually forward some information from other towns that have higher tax rates on any business that has more than 10 employees whose business is worth more than, or less than a million dollars. You can offer them exemptions from that higher tax rate.
Yeah, but the, the tax would go up immensely on them or, and/or, just, just so you know, one of the, one of the problems is, is that until you hit that 80% mark, and you really have to hit it. You really can't change the rate without, and substantially do anything for the residents. And if you're gonna do it, you're doing it so you can lower the taxes on the residents. And if you can't do that, then there's no sense in doing it. So, uh, time, it's coming, believe me, it's coming, we're getting there.
But that 80, that 80/20 is just a number, that's not set in stone.
No, it's, it's not just the number. It's, it's the number that actually works. And when she comes in, she comes in, what, January, right? Is it January? No. Uh, is it January that she comes in? She always has it all compiled and it shows you how much, how much each thing is. Like if we lower, if we change the tax rate to this split, this is what the residents will get, this is this. And it's a pretty good thing that she does. It's absolutely amazing.
Who is she?
And, uh,
That's the, uh, the director of assessing.
Uh, yeah.
The guidance that we follow when we set the tax rate comes from the Massachusetts Department of Revenue. So it's, it's not something that, uh, you know, it's not a custom, it's not something that we came up with on our own as some kind of, you know, arbitrary measure. This is the actual guidance we get from the Department of Revenue's Division of Local Services, who are also the people who set our tax rate, uh, you know, go through and approve that. They do the same for the Fire and Water Districts and so forth. So what we've done consistently since I've been on the board is to, is to follow their advice. Past boards that did not follow the advice of the Department of Revenue got this town into some financial pickles that, uh, I know Alan and I can certainly, uh, remember back when we first came on the board, you know, the delightful need to replenish our employee healthcare trust fund 1.5 million and not have free cash to buy vehicles or anything else for a year. So we're basically doing what we, what the state experts are telling us to do. But if you have information about how other towns do it, I'm happy to see it if you'd like to send it to me.
Yeah, yeah.
I absolutely will because I've got information on two other towns and I'm just curious. I'm not looking to destroy small businesses in town. I absolutely
No, I get that.
They should not be taxed the same as a Walmart or a Target. Um, but I don't think I should be taxed at the same rate as a Walmart or a Target either. But I'll forward that information over. Thank you so much for your answers.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
For bringing this up, it might be interesting. Let's see, Annie Hayes has her hand up.
Peter, we also forgot to do announcements, so after the comments, we'll have to go back to announcements.
Oh, yeah, regular announcements. Okay, well, we'll, let's, we have Annie waiting, so let's, let's hear from Annie.
Hello.
You're there, but we need you to turn on your microphone, please.
There. Okay.
Here we go.
Good evening. Um, I'm referring back to a, a March 8th conversation with the planning board. It was about, um, a video had been shown of sand removal and, um, there was a conversation about the earth removal fee and, um, that there was not one for the, um, the make-piece sites.
I'm gonna have to stop you right here, Annie. We were served with a complaint today named our planning board, our individual members of the planning board, AD Make-Piece Company and Borrego Solar, alleging, uh, that the planning board's special permit that was most recently granted, uh, was done in an arbitrary capricious manner. So now that we're in litigation, uh, we're not gonna, uh, something we can talk about during our meetings.
All right, thank you for explaining that.
Sorry. Uh, let's see, I don't see anybody else, so let's go back to announcements. Judy, we'll start with you this time.
Yeah, okay. The used book sales, um, have resumed at the Wareham Free Library. Access to the sale is through the meeting room door, not through the library, so you go sort of up a little ramp. Each month, the Friends will have a theme. They have plenty of books in all genres and for all ages. Month of April, our theme is, uh, children's books. The dates and the times of the sale are April 22nd, Thursday from 9:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. April 23rd, Friday, from 9:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m. April 24th, Saturday, from 9:30 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Shoppers are asked to please bring their own bags if possible. The Friends are still unable to accept any donations at this time, so please don't bring those books. Hang on to them because they'll be able to use them later on. A virtual storytime with the children's librarian is posted each week on Facebook and on the library website. To date, Ms. Marcia has filmed 43 weeks' worth of virtual children's storytimes, activity videos, and children's and young adult book talks. The library archived, archived most of these videos online and they can also be found in the archives here on the website. Counsel on Aging reminder: Applications for fuel assistance deadline have been extended to April 30th, which is another week, basically. Call 508-291-3100, extension 3133, to determine your eligibility and to schedule an appointment. Chair Yoga with Pam is beginning April 22nd on Thursdays at 2:00 p.m. outdoors at the Wareham Free Library, weather permitting. Call 508-291-3130 to register. That would be the Counsel on Aging. Volunteer drivers are still needed for the Meals on Wheels program. There is a mileage reimbursement and please call 291-3100, extension 6514 for more information or to join. Beginning April 20th from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. at the rear of the multi-service center, weather permitting, the COA Counsel on Aging will have coffee and conversation sessions. All seniors are invited to attend. And it goes without saying, unfortunately, everyone must wear masks and be socially distanced. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Alan.
I have some sad news for the town. Those of you who remember the OPL and stuff, uh, Peter's mother, we have other people that were involved with this, Ann Campbell, which is probably, I think, the second to last member of the original group who used to run the Catatite Night and a lot of other things passed away yesterday. And I like, for a moment of silence, Ann was a fixture in the town for a long, long time. Thank you. You know, the other thing I have is that we'd like to also send out my appreciation to the Garden Club for, again, their annual and all-season-long of the Pots of Down Main Street where they take care of that constantly. It's a lot of work and it's really appreciated. It makes downtown Main Street look quite nice. That's it for today.
Thanks. Uh, Patrick?
Yeah, I don't have any announcements. Thank you.
Jim?
Pass.
Okay, uh, well, I have one. Uh, May 4th, town election, 8 until 8. Uh, you can vote early. The ballot box is out, so you can get your absentee ballot and put it in the ballot box. It's out by town hall. It's being checked every, every night by the clerk, so it's pretty secure. So go ahead and participate in the town election. Uh, and I would echo Alan's sentiments about, uh, Ann Campbell. Uh, I knew Ann for a long time. Uh, she was an outstanding member of the community. She and her late husband ran a great business in Depot Auto. Nobody will know how many repair jobs they ended up giving away to people who were in difficult circumstances and, you know, just simply couldn't pay the bills. Uh, these, these people were true salt of the earth and, you know, we should be proud that they chose Wareham to live and we should be proud of all the work they did when they were here. So, very sad day. Moving on, uh, we have an appointment for the Affordable Housing Trust. Uh, could we bring Mr. Carl Schultz up, please?
Could I turn his mic on?
Yeah. I think actually WCTV turns it on for them.
There you go.
How about now? Can we now?
We can hear you, but you're a little garbled.
Okay, I'll try.
That's better.
Connection. Good evening.
Good evening. So you would, would like to serve on the Affordable Housing Trust? Why don't you tell us, tell us a little bit about yourself, please?
Uh, yes, I am a fairly new citizen in town. My wife and I have had Rock Town for quite a while, but we retired three years ago. We have Fan Town, so, um, we're excited to settle for, settle here for our, uh, I moved here from New Jersey. In New Zeeland, for 10, I was the chung of the affordable housing, uh, our town in New Zeke. And, uh, spent all time actively, uh, working to be affordable housing situation to, to ensure that, uh, right folks what they need. In Jersey, there is, uh, lottery system who, who acts as eligible to choose a, or else. And we made and ran that, that lottery. And then we, uh, we were a semi, judicial, we, with complaint and relations of the rule. So a lot of experience, hard perspective. And, uh, am, uh, very committed to, to help town move forward.
Great. Uh, questions from the board. Alan?
Uh, just wanna thank Carl. Carl actually was being interviewed, uh, probably 45 minutes ago for the, uh, planning board position of either associate or regular full planning member. So again, thank you very much for not only stepping up for one, but for both.
Yeah, very, very interested in helping, thank you.
Greatly appreciate it.
Thank you. Uh, Patrick?
No.
Uh, Jim, and I'll jump in for one second here. Uh, you did come with the unanimous recommendation from the Affordable Housing Trust, so that's, that's always helpful, but Jim?
I'm all set.
I just wanna, wanna just thank Carl for, um, applying to the trust and he has a good background and, um, he, he attended as a citizen and uh, his, his background definitely helped and he was informative and, um, and could be a good asset to the group. And I want to thank him.
Thank you.
Judy? Your, your microphone, Judy.
The only question I was going to ask was whether he, whether you, Mr. Schultz, had attended any of the meetings.
Yes, I have, yes. And I, I, I did go back and I read entire boards from then.
Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you very much for applying. Uh, I don't have any questions. You seem to have the right resume for this, this board for sure. Can we have a motion, please?
I move that we appoint Carl Schultz of 15 Robey Street, Wareham, Mass. to the Affordable Housing Trust to a term that expires June 30th, 2023.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Patrick. Roll call, vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500. It is unanimous and Judy will tell you when is a good time to go pick up your papers and get sworn in.
Probably Monday would, the papers will be ready, then you would take them, you pick them up at the Board of Selectmen's office and then go down to the town clerk's office to be sworn in.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, licenses and permits. Uh, we have a request for temporary outdoor seating.
We do. Um, all of the, um, all of the sign-offs have been, um, approved for this. So I move that we approve the temporary outdoor seating request, all alcohol license from Trova Inc., DBA Baileys, Surf and Turf, 3056 Cranberry Highway, East Wareham.
Second.
Okay, motion to approve the temporary outdoor seating application by Judy, seconded by Alan. Any questions? Seeing none. Uh, Alan, roll call? Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500.
Hey, we have an application from LS Computers of 239 Onset Avenue for a secondhand dealer's license. Um, all of the paperwork is in order. And so I move that we
Uh, hold on one second. We do have, uh, somebody with the initials LS, who I assume is Larry Senna. So let's bring him forward so that he can be part of this.
Uh, okay, can I just finish the motion or do you want me to hold?
Yeah, go ahead and finish the motion.
Okay, I move that we approve the application of LS Computers 239 Onset Avenue, onset for a secondhand dealer's license.
Second by Alan.
Okay, uh, we'll wait. Here we go.
And all the paperwork is in order.
Yep. So we'll just wait for Larry to join us. Who do you go?
Just waiting for his audio.
Yeah.
You're not Larry, okay? He says he's not Larry.
Well, if he's representing the company, then.
I think it's Lenny, isn't it?
Oh.
Are you representing the company, I guess is the question.
No.
No. No, he's not.
Okay.
Oh, so he's the, he's not the LS of LS Computer?
Nope.
Very interesting. Well, that's a coincidence. Sorry to bother you, whoever you are, LS, and we'll go back to the vote.
So I did make the motion and it was
And it was seconded by Alan.
Yeah.
Uh, roll call, vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, it's 500. Larry Senna, your license will be, uh, ready, you believe, when? Monday, Judy, you think?
Monday, I would say, yes.
Okay, in case you're listening on TV or something.
Larry and his wife are some of the hardest-working people we know and they make one heck of a lobster roll, too.
Yes, they do.
Yeah, they do. Okay, I move, we, these are renewals. I move that we approve the renewal of GameStop Inc., number 3814, of 2421 Cranberry Highway Suite 412 in Wareham.
Second.
Okay, did you wanna make, do you wanna move to approve them all if they just renewals?
Sure. Uh, Gold World Inc. at 3112 Cranberry Highway, Unit C in East Wareham. Not your average antiques of 3086 Cranberry Highway East Wareham. South Shore Generator Service Inc., 2696A Cranberry Highway Wareham and Wesley United Methodist Church, 462 Main Street Wareham. I'm going to remind all of the applicants that they are not to use sidewalks for display purposes. That's right on the license.
Second.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Patrick to approve, uh, the licenses as presented. Yeah, and, and further to your point, Judy, uh, any display outside of the premises has to be approved.
That's, that's correct.
It's not just sidewalks, even on their own property. Alan?
On the Wesley Church, uh, are they considered a nonprofit? Do they have to have a secondhand license?
They have to have a license, but we don't charge them.
Okay, so all the church groups apply the same way then?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. I hadn't seen it before. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, the courts have ruled that their sales are consistent with charitable endeavors, so we're not allowed to charge them the $100 renewal fee or the $150 original fee, so.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, uh, we have a motion and a second. Uh, roll call, vote. Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500.
Um, just for the record, I wanted to make sure that those, that you all understand that those are under the bylaws, Division 2, Article 2, and Sections 1 through 3. They are a regulated business, all of them, so they need to follow the rules.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving down onto town business. COVID-19 update, we're back in the red.
For a while.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah. We are back in the red.
We've been in the red.
We've got, uh, 77 new confirmed cases and seven probable in the past eight days as of, uh,
This is, this is extremely bad, extremely bad. The fact that, um, that it looks like people think this thing is over. Now, thank God there hasn't been a lot of deaths, okay, but that doesn't matter. You know, somebody doesn't realize, there could be somebody out there, someone, who for some reason or another didn't know they have an underlying condition and they could pass. Okay, so, you, and you don't know if you're the one, you know, you roll the dice, kinda thing. And, you know, I see people now with the mask down around their mouth, not covering their nose. I see them not washing their hands. They go up to the counters, they do whatever. They don't wash, bother to clean their hands. They just come up and go, and guess what? That's gonna spread them, just like it did before, just like it always did. Nothing has changed. And until everybody, until this thing is done, keep doing what you're supposed to do for crying out loud. I mean, I'm vaccinated, I'm still wearing a mask, I'm still washing my hands every day. I never go in front of anybody without my mask on my face, without washing my hands. This has gotta stop. I mean, you know, Wareham is spinning red for a bit and, uh, it may start to affect some things. We got a town meeting coming up. That may be problematic now. Being as steep in the red as we are. So, uh, you know, this is, this is not good, people. You gotta straighten your act out. You just gotta.
Peter, have a question. Derek?
Yeah, please.
Uh, Derek, do we have a breakout of what age groups, uh, the cases are coming through?
That's a good idea. That's a real good idea.
I don't receive that. I just received what I just gave you, but I can look at, I think the Commonwealth has that, so I can get that off.
You know, Bob is a board of health, you usually get the information through. It'd really be nice to know who is actually transmitting and where the diseases are coming from, because I have a feeling it's dropped down to a much younger group than what it was before. Thank you.
Yes, thanks. Be safe. You know, it's, just pretend this is March last year or April last year, uh, when this was, you know, basically keeping us in our homes, uh, you know, we were out, you know, obviously, a lot of the steps we took, we, we learned after the fact we didn't have to take. But approach the masking and the social distancing and the sort of staying within your own, uh, limited group of people and washing the hands. Please, please continue to take that seriously.
Well, they're gonna take, they're gonna end up taking everything away from them that we already just gained. Like including being able to go to the movies and be able to do some of these other things that are getting people, you know, to feel good about themselves and get out of their house. And they'll take it all away. They'll take it all away. I tell you, you know what? I gotta say one more thing. I'm sorry. But there's gonna be a rally at the State House for people who don't wanna wear masks, don't think they should do anything about it, don't think they should shut down, don't think they could do anything, I guess this weekend or something, or Friday or Thursday or whatever. And I don't know what, I don't know where these people come from. They, they, they climb out from under the rocks and, uh, you know, they, they don't wanna do anything to, to help the rest of mankind, for Christ's sake. I'm sorry, but I, I, I know I'm on my soapbox again and you know I like to do that. I'm pretty compassionate about this stuff. And, you know, it's sad. People die this way, as they do from drugs and everything else. And we, we, we owe this, we owe everybody else the right to be able to live and breathe and enjoy life. We owe it to them. That's all. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Peter, just one thing. I'm sorry to interrupt again. Uh, we have a business, Waterwiz, in Wareham, which probably employs 250 people during the summer. A lot of kids depend on that. That particular business, if we stay in the red, went this way, they will never open.
Nope.
And, uh, she's been up close for one year. If she has to close for a second year, Adam Samson's gonna have to find a new place to do his movies.
It's so sad. It's just, it's so sad.
Yep, and it's, these aren't huge impositions to wear a mask and wash your hands, so.
No.
Okay, uh, trash disposal update.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. When last I was here, maybe you'd asked for, uh, some of the numbers. I'm just gonna break out what we have so far. We have 2,097 people that did the opt-out to the transfer station. 394 non-residents, so those are Carver folks. And, um, so, so far we've had a hundred and one people take care of, or households take, take advantage of the seasonal, and looking at Patty's desk in the other room, we know there's a lot more coming in, we expect there to be an increase. This is a real interesting number, and I think it was helpful, because we were told only a few people would qualify for the senior one, a hundred and six people have qualified, households have qualified for the senior exemption.
Good, yeah, that's great.
That's nice.
And then we have a total of, it looks like we've got seventy-seven hundred people that are households that are receiving bills for the, for the full curbside program, which is higher than, than expected, but we're still getting all the paperwork from folks and such. We had somebody that bought their sticker, well, didn't buy their sticker, opted in and got the free sticker back in January, and then, right before the bills went out, said that they wanted to change and opt out of the system, and then, and then started complaining that their trash barrels hadn't been picked up, so that's been, that's been a little interesting. But for everyone like that, there's, there's a bunch of people that have been, that have been aggrieved, there's also a lot of people that are enjoying it, so. I know there's some frustrations, tomorrow, myself, the director, and members from ABC are meeting together and just going over a few more items, and if you opted out or don't want the barrels and haven't told anybody, obviously, that's, it's hard for, for them to, to know that, so. You know, little bit of, little bit of chaos there, but I appreciate everybody's patience and those that's been working for us seem to be very content, so.
Okay, and just to clarify, just to clarify, you know, who to call if you've opted out and still had, still wound up with the barrels, that would be called ABC disposals directly, correct?
Yeah, they are the ones picking up the barrels, so if you look at, in a simple way to look at it is, ABC is for any of the, any of the program related matters in that your, if your pickup was missed, if you now opted out and you have barrels, that's ABC. Wareham is all the billing, municipal maintenance is all the billing, billing questions, things such as that, including wanting new, wanting extra barrels, because again, that's billing, you need to be billed, you need to pay for those extra barrels upfront. So that's a good way to look at it, we'll put out, we'll bullet point something out tomorrow after the meeting, we just want to clarify everything, make sure everyone's on the same page and move it forward. This is obviously the most difficult time in, in a new program is the initial offset, we expect to have, you know, we'll have a few more things that happen as seasonal folks roll in, but it's, you know, one of the nice things to see is, and, you know, I'm sure I'll get somebody's ire, the uniformity of the barrels, instead of seeing, you know, four different versions of barrels scattered across the, the entire town, so, it lets, there's an old selectman that used to like the, use the word podunk, makes us look a little less podunk.
Steve.
So, Peter?
Yes.
All right, so I just want to remind everybody, some people have been complaining at Swiss Beach that he didn't get picked up today, and that's because of the holiday. And people have to understand that if there's a Monday holiday or a Thursday holiday or whatever, they move the thing down one day, so if your pickup was for Monday, you're now on Tuesday, if you were on Tuesday, you're on Wednesday, and it goes all the way out until they do a Saturday that week, and the Saturday is the pickup for the missing day, basically, so just understand that if there's a holiday and, and, and you're off, that you're gonna have to put it out a day later, okay?
Isn't that information all posted on the website?
Yeah, but they don't pay any attention to that, I'm hoping that the press will get it out, maybe they'll pay attention, because they've been complaining.
I, I will say how impressed I am, driving around, spent some time with Mr. Menard today, but some of the streets at the trash trucks are going down and picking up barrels, and some of those folks that they, nobody would take, nobody would do curbside delivery for them before, they were told their streets were too narrow, so they were really happy to get going on the program for an area that wouldn't, they, they were refused service before.
Awesome.
The, the other interesting thing is once, before, when it was looking like, what Jim, we were about eighty-twenty with cars between Wareham and Carver cars going to the transfer station, I think we're now up to, we're now changing a little bit as the trash, as the curbside program comes along, it looks like we're closer now to seventy-five twenty-five, seventy-five percent of the people using a transfer station are Wareham and twenty-five percent Carver, that's been for the last few weeks, and then there'll be, once we get into the full-on summer season, it'll be interesting to see what happens. Given that we've done the seasonal, seasonal reduction for the, for the six months, we do need to apply for DEP if we're changing the days of the week, and I believe to the host community for days of the week for a transfer station, so that's not a given that we would be able to change those days, but it does give seasonal persons options to do the curbside if they, if they want to go with the program.
Okay.
Any other questions on trash?
All set.
Okay, moving on, discussion of vote to authorize negotiation of a marijuana host community agreement for Emerald Turtle Cove Management Company LLC, ten Littlebrook Road, Wareham, Mass., could we bring forward Aaron Goins and Erica Kennedy, please? They're the principals of this company, so.
Who's the second?
Second one is Erica Kennedy.
Let me correct you a little bit there, the other principal would be my wife, Janelle Goins.
Oh, okay, it was showing up, I thought.
I'm, I'm an E E also, but we are not connected to this company, we are looking to come in as a separate delivery company.
Oh, okay, so you're not part of this presentation?
No, we are not a part of this presentation.
Okay, well, well, thank you for letting us know that, and we will proceed with Mr. Goins and his wife then.
In addition, our lawyer Blake Mensing should be brought on as well.
Oh, okay, yep, I see him there, yep, recognize the name, let's go ahead with, bring Blake in, please. Good evening.
Evening.
So, I don't know which, which one of you is going to present, but tell us what, what your plan is and take it from there.
Sure, I'll, I'll give a quick introduction, so as you mentioned, this is a proposed cannabis establishment at ten Littlebrook in Wareham, obviously, the proposal is for a tier-six cultivation, which is between forty thousand and one square feet and fifty thousand square feet, which puts it right about in the midsize range in terms of the total maximum cultivation canopy allowed by the Cannabis Control Commission, as well as a co-located manufacturing operation and a wholesale delivery operation as well, those would be three separate licenses, and this is just a request for commencement of negotiations on the terms of the state required host community agreement. If you have any sort of operational questions, I'm sure Aaron and Janelle can answer, but yeah, that's how we see it from our perspective, and we appreciate your time this evening.
Okay, Alan has a question?
Yeah, I'm sorry it took so long, I know these people have waited quite a while to get this done, they've been tied up with rent and everything else for the facility. I only have one issue, unfortunately, today the planning board, I had to leave the meeting early, was questioning on the delivery part of the programs, because Wareham really hasn't set anything up per se, and they were working on how many deliveries they were gonna actually license out, and they actually, two weeks ago, a week ago, were actually talking about zero delivery program, which basically I thought was not possible, I got a hold of Cannabis Control Commission, I supplied the planning board with all the information, and to Ken Buckland, I have not heard what the results are today, so I don't know what they're gonna do, so as far as delivery goes, more than happy to try and get this host agreement done, but I think we should hold off just a little bit on, on delivery until we have an idea of what's really happening. I don't think they're doing any zoning changes, but I am concerned about what they're gonna do as far as if they're gonna limit, you know, the actual number of companies that can deliver, I know myself and Jim and he thought delivery should be unlimited as far as we're concerned, but the bottom line is they actually, the pre, previous meeting, sorry, we're actually talking about zero, which I didn't think that was legal, so I did give them the information, but I think on the delivery, until this is decided, hopefully tonight, because it's gonna be actually a warrant article for town meeting with the numbers they're gonna allow, so just so everybody understands we don't have anything in place right now. So I hope you can go ahead and take, take care of the first two pieces, which is the manufacturing and also the growing.
I just, may I ask, it's a clarification question, would, would all of these licenses be granted to Emerald Turtle Cove Management Company LLC?
That's correct.
Thank you, and so it would be delivery, manufacturing, and?
Cultivation.
Thank you.
Okay, Patrick, any questions?
You know, I, you know that I don't like the whole idea of delivery at all, but I know that we're kind of stuck with some delivery, otherwise they'll take and deliver it from out of town into Wareham, and that's a problem, but I think we need to put the regulation in place before we, before that happens, so I can see us negotiating the first couple of parts, but not the delivery yet.
Yeah, and we do have, like, you know, as was mentioned, we do have an article for the upcoming town meeting to limit the number of marijuana delivery operators, that was three, wasn't it?
I think so, yeah.
And, and this was done in a, this would be done if it passes, of course, which is no guarantee, it's a zoning bylaw, and you, you know, you need two-thirds vote. This is, is done sort of in the same vein as the original marijuana bylaw that was passed back in, I think, March of twenty eighteen, where we, in order to get control of retail operations, to make sure we weren't either overrun or to make sure that, you know, we didn't have enough locations to serve residents, you know, as the case may be, we started out with a limit of three, and it stayed at that for now, because we've got two more in the pipeline. At this point in time, as more communities come online, there's less of a demand, of course, to open up more and more retail places, so it worked out pretty well there, but again, where we're entering a new facet of the business, since the Cannabis Control Commission has let this go forward, I think that's the intent of the bylaw, it's certainly not to choke off any particular person or to take away opportunities, but it is to limit the amount of operators in town doing delivery so that they don't put each other all out of business.
Well, but what they did is.
If I may, Mr. Chair?
But you know what they did is they added retail operations, is what they did, doesn't matter whether you deliver it or they come and get it, it's, they're added a retail operation, so instead of three, we're gonna have six, that's what's gonna happen.
That, that's not correct as a matter of law, unfortunately, the way the Cannabis Control Commission regulates delivery operators is categorically separate from retail, so your power to limit a brick and mortar retail is very different than the power to limit delivery, and if I may, because you have brick and mortar allowed in town already, you cannot block citizens from receiving deliveries, so the only thing by delaying or disapproving delivery operators from making Wareham your home base, you're really just saying we don't want any potential revenues from that license class, but you'll have all of the impacts. So, you know, I understand town meeting is its own, you know, legislative body, I'm a former municipal attorney myself, it, it just, it's, it's legally incorrect to call it retail, it's not defined as such, it does not count against the rule of three anti-monopoly provision in the Cannabis Control Regulations, so I, I just want to make sure that's understood.
Well, let me, let me tell you, whether you, I don't care what you call it, okay, but it's, it is a retail operation, you're selling directly to the customer, okay, so we have three retail licenses, and then maybe we're gonna have three delivery licenses, but all three of them are retail, because you're selling directly to the customer, that makes it retail, and you can call it whatever you want, the law can call it whatever they want, but what it is from reality is what it is, okay?
Well, you're, you're limited by what the law allows.
Don't, don't throw any of that baloney at me.
Hold on, one at a time, please.
I don't want to hear the baloney, that's baloney what you're saying, what you're doing is you're trying to carve out these little tiny places, but it's bull crap, okay? I don't want to hear it, don't even talk to me anymore, I don't want to hear it.
All right.
Very professional.
Let's, let's watch the tone here.
Peter?
Just go ahead, Alan.
Okay, let me read from Matt G. Ancola, Director of Government Affairs and Policy, Cannabis Control Commission, Union Station Worcester. I, I asked for a couple of different clarifications, the clarification, the last one I got, which I had to send to the planning board, had to do with the minimum and maximum numbers, I'm just gonna read what it is here, so everybody is clear, we're not making up anything, this is coming directly from the Cannabis Control Commission, hi, selectmen slaver, sorry for the delay, there are certain no limits to the number of establishments, the municipality may license at a local level, regarding any potential minimums, the municipality must control, must comply, sorry, with chapter ninety-four G, section three. For specific questions, what a town could do, we recommend consulting the town council, as we cannot offer specific zoning guidance, and that's, that was the piece that I had to get over to the planning board, because as I said before, a week and a half, or two weeks ago, they were actually contemplating zero licenses, you know, for delivery, which I don't.
Yeah, that's not gonna work.
And that's not legal.
It's not gonna work either.
I know that, but I don't know what they're gonna do today, I don't, I don't know what brought it on today.
My, my, excuse me, my question would be, is it possible for us to be able to still negotiate all three of them? Because it can be contingent upon what happens at that time, because not, holding us off from negotiating it is just prolonging our process, because we have to come back to you with what is negotiated and it has to be approved regardless, so why are we being stopped from negotiating?
Well, I, I don't know that you, that you are being stopped from negotiating, it's just a question of what would be granted when, at the time, you know, it may be that the two phases are granted, we hold off on the third, we wait for town meeting to weigh in, and then, of course, as I'm sure Attorney Mensing knows, once town meeting weighs in, if it's a bylaw, you gotta wait for the AG to say yea or nay, and go through that process, but there's no reason why negotiations couldn't proceed on that basis.
Peter, can I make a comment again?
Yep.
This particular thing on delivery was done for minorities, which allows them the opportunity, and minorities could be anybody, especially income levels, because most of the retail operations and all the cannabis control operations are are being run by huge companies with lots and lots of money, and it locked down all the minorities having a chance to get in to this particular business. The delivery program was set up especially for minorities such as the Gomes to have an opportunity to go to business and make money like everybody else. So as far as I'm concerned, once we get to this delivery number straightened out, I would give them priority preference for delivery, so it's not a matter of not negotiating, we just don't know what the planning board is going to allow for delivery, and that piece was out of my hands until they make that decision. But I have no problem going ahead and saying, you know, once we know what it is, we'd be number one on our list as far as I'm concerned.
And when does that decision get made?
Well, there's, it was supposed to have a meeting tonight, unfortunately, I had to leave, leave the meeting, so I'm, I'm expecting to have an answer tomorrow. It was still, it was a town meeting, yes.
Right, it's, it's our article that we put on, they're holding a public hearing, as they do with all zoning articles.
Correct.
To, to change zoning tonight, and they will make a recommendation to the, the town meeting body, just as the finance committee does, just as the board of selectmen does. So, they won't actually, town meeting will be the one to decide what, what happens with the article, but the planning board plays an important part in the process, they do a public hearing, and they take in public input, listen to the, the director of planning and so on and so forth, and they'll make a recommendation and a report to town meeting, but I agree with Alan, you know, when marijuana retail sales were legalized back in twenty sixteen, they threw in this almost pretense of social equity and social justice, and let's, let's, let's allow people who paid a bigger toll in terms of their race or their ethnicity or their economic circumstances got hit harder with marijuana criminalization than the majority of the population did, that was one of the big things they used to pitch the law, and then, of course, because the law was written substantially by industry, they said, well, that was nice, let's just give it to the big players from out of state, the people with the deep pockets and everything else, and that's how the retail establishments all came online. As Alan says, not much happened in the way of social equity or justice with those, so I, so it's a recalibration by the Cannabis Control Commission to allow the, the, the delivery option to come in and to try to, you know, do what the law originally intended, so it's a bit of a makeup provision, it's kind of like an NFL game where they call somebody for pass interference and they didn't touch the guy, and then the next thing you know, there's, you know, holding on the offensive line to move them back where they would have been in the first place, so that's kind of what's going on here.
Well, our original.
But that's kind of what it is.
Our original license, the first license we gave out was a nice, small, little company, they were, you know, actually ethnic, and they, they had a plan to put together that they were going. To put together that they were going to give most of the money to charity and so on and so forth. And that started going and growing and, uh, they unfortunately, um, it got sold twice since then. And it got sold to a bigger and bigger company each time until now it's, it's, it's what it is. It's a big, big company. And that's sad, you know, because, uh, we had hoped when we set it up. That we would have this nice little family operation down there doing whatever and unfortunately didn't happen. By the way, I'm not saying that you're not gonna get a license for your, for your, for whatever. I just don't agree with them. But that's beside the point. We're not gonna cut our own throats. And say, we're gonna let people come from out of town to come in and deliver when we can have delivery people inside. It's just a matter of like everybody's saying, how many licenses are we gonna have? Because, you know.
Can you give a date? Like, what is the date that that will be decided? How long?
All right. So the, uh, right now, the town meeting comes up and then there has to go to the Attorney General for approval. So you have the town meeting and it's, uh, sometime in May, right? It's early May there.
May eighth is the, is the current date.
Right now it's May eighth. It could get pushed off because of COVID. We don't know. But it's, um, it's May eighth right now and then it goes to the Attorney General for approval. Uh, usually takes at least a month or so. And maybe a couple of months, huh? Before they finally approve that stuff?
Can I speak real quick? Um, I'm speaking from a very personal note, whether this is good for our prospects or not, but. This has been a long and arduous journey to go through. My wife and I were instrumental in the actual design of the delivery operator license. You can look our names up. We are part of a movement in this community. Uh, I'm sorry, I just have to say this. This, there is an exclusivity period granted to social equity participants such as ourselves.
Correct.
Three years. That does not allow the bigger guys to get in prior to that. It is imperative from a business competitive standpoint for your town, knowing that Middleborough. Your next door neighbor has already granted three of these licenses. These people will be running prior to us at this point. This is very critical right now that this has to be expedited as much as possible under your powers because. We are trying to be partners with the town of Wareham. And this is not gonna be a situation where we get an ACA and sit on it for three years as funding is looked to be raised. We are ready to operate the second that we are able to get this ACA, AC, uh, for delivery with you guys. Cause we need to optimize every single day of exclusivity period, which will benefit us. Everybody that works for us and will benefit the taxpayers of this town. So I beg of you as somebody who has paid out of pocket. For this building. We need to get this delivery license up and running in Wareham ASAP. Because Middleborough, right next door, is gonna come in, is gonna be all out assault, taking tax revenues from this town that should be for that town. And I apologize for my tone and everything. It's just, it's a stress of paying out of your pocket for a building. We're now a year into this. And I know this sounds marginal of another thirty days or going to June or whatever. I'm speaking to you as somebody that cannot continue. To, to keep paying out of pocket. People go bankrupt before they get a chance to get in this business and it starts at a town level. So please let us go to work for you, for the town, for the residents, be contributing members of this community. I beg of you guys. That's all I gotta say. I don't know what else I have to say, but whatever you can do in your power, please speed this up.
Uh, Derek?
Sure. And, um, could you just clarify, is this an impact fee on delivery or is it a tax?
Uh, it would be permissible to have a community impact fee, which would be up to three percent of gross revenues. For impacts that are reasonably related to the facility's operation. Um, I can tell you. Pardon?
Let him finish.
So that's a negative. Uh, with the Haverhill lawsuit that we have going on. And it's been my biggest fear and I think it's exactly what we're seeing from cannabis companies. Is going on when we wanted the retail tax, the towns are now getting, if you will, we're talking about this revenue. Towns are now getting screwed. This.
I'm sorry, but.
Sir, it's, it's going to be, we know it will be gone sooner rather than later. So we know that revenue is gone for the community. Wareham will not make money off of this.
You get, you get the retail tax from us as well. You get the three percent.
That's what I asked. Is that retail too?
You get both.
No.
I don't believe that's correct. So it, it would be a community impact fee. But I'm not sure why you cut me off while I was trying to explain what the statute provides for the community impact fee. That's very relevant.
Yeah, people need to start going through me in this meeting, not to each other.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, Attorney Mensing.
I, I was just trying to explain what the community impact fee, uh, statute allows for. Um, so yeah, a, a, any impacts that are reasonably related to this facility's operation for any one of the licenses they're hoping to obtain. Um, i- if the town can show, you know, an impact, say there, uh, is a new traffic stop that's required or a police detail. Or some cost that's attributable to the operation, then up to three percent of the facility's gross revenue would come back to the town. Um, so that's.
Right. That's a reimbursement. That's not tax revenue.
Well, you know what? We're not, we're not gonna negotiate this here tonight. Uh, all this is on for is a vote to authorize a negotiation. So we, we don't, this is. This is the kind of conversation that I would expect our negotiators to be having with the applicants. Uh, Alan?
Okay, I'm sorry. I was on the phone with, uh, Valani Dolphine, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen in Middleborough. Um, just to get you an idea, they have two, one came before them. There's a second one coming for delivery. Uh, they do not have a town meeting type of article for that. They just added it to their host agreement. Uh, they had KP Law, I guess, draw up whatever they did. And that's how they're running theirs. So this is a little different. As they do have, I believe, some kind of, um, max or minimum. You know, they asked me, are you unlimited? It says, no, I think we have a max. You know, on there, but basically it's all wrapped into the, all three now. So there, there is no town meeting for that for them. They just went ahead and put it into the host screen. They modified the host screen to include delivery. So that's what's happening in Middleborough. That's per the Board of Selectmen.
Yep. Well, you know, once again, we're not.
If I may, it's, this goes back to what we've been, this isn't about the folks in front of us today. This is the frustrations that we're feeling. Of supporting marijuana, we being one of the first communities to go forward. And that community impact, uh, the, we're already seeing what's happening. Um, about eighteen months ago, I told you my fear that there'd be lawsuits and we'd see this going away. That the impact fee is not a revenue at the end of the day. It's a reimbursement. So that's, that's my real concern. I think, I think I want as many businesses as possible, but if it's just an impact fee. That's cutting into our retail marijuana of the three percent that we get as a tax.
Well, that's, sounds like a negotiating point that you would wanna bring up, uh, if, uh, we do vote to authorize negotiations. To try to straighten that out and to try to firm up, uh, what the payments would be and, and in what form. So.
Oh, you just quoted the law. We can't.
We can't, there's nothing to negotiate.
So treat it like any other business. Sorry, that, at the pleasure of the chair. I, 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 it, this is, this is not the time or the place to have this debate as the chair correctly stated. Um, it, it's just, uh, you have to imagine being, uh, an attorney who only represents cannabis businesses. I, I've had this. Level of anger directed at me before. Um, the law is the law and, and I just really implore you, as, as Aaron said. You know, we've been waiting for a year to have a discussion to commence negotiations on a host community agreement, which is the first of many steps they have to take.
I know. Just, Mr. Chairman, that's actually incorrect. It was, we were all set with going forward with manufacturing and growing. It's been the delivery that's been the problem. You know, and I, I saw the timeline and I did not appreciate the, if you will, the jabs taking that director Buckland.
All right. Uh, Jim? Yeah, Jim, go ahead.
Thank you. So, just, just to get back on track. They're looking for, uh, growing, manufacturing and delivery. And delivery is a retail tax which stays in the town no matter whether they're delivering in Wareham or Middleborough.
Nope.
Taxes collected for the town, whoever's the delivery person. Am I correct on that?
It's not a tax.
On the retail and, uh, there's a tax when you sell it as a delivery person. Am I correct or incorrect?
No, that's.
Well, again, we don't have counsel here tonight, so I, I don't really think we should be delving too far into legalities of it.
Let me, uh, let me fix up. That, that's how I understand it from reading it on, um. The web, the state website, CCC website. And, um. We also, we have another, um. Production facility being contemplated for the town. And, um, I guess that would fall into the same decision-making, um, thought process. If that be the case on, um. The, the actual revenues being delivered to the town from the business. Um, I just have one question really. I saw two versions of the HCA. Would the one that you'd be starting would be the one that was sent by your attorney, uh, Mensing?
Uh, they, they both came from me. Uh, we just revised, uh, I believe, the proposed community impact fee.
And that was the, um, the one that came from you though, to lit, was, um, sent to you.
No, no version came from the town. Uh, Mr. Buckland requested that we submit a version.
No, no, right.
Yeah.
So you submitted it on, um, I don't know, was it thirteenth or fourteenth?
Yeah, back in March is my recollection.
Okay, so there's two different versions that I, that I was looking at tonight. One was revised, I believe.
Yes, the revised one is the one.
Yeah, so that's, I, I, that's where I'd start personally. That's, and, um. I, you know, we're talking about delivery. What about the courier numbers? Is there a number on those?
I'm sorry, I don't, I don't know what you mean by that.
No, that's all right. I'm, I'm not pointing it to you there, Attorney Mensing. Um, through, through, uh, Mr. Titlebomb. Is there a number on the couriers? Cause you have delivery service and you have courier service. It's two different things.
Couriers, as I understand it, that license goes along with an existing retail license. Uh, so they would be basically couriers of their own, uh, retail product.
Would you like me to clarify that, Peter?
Sure. Uh, we're starting to get into conversations where I'd rather have town council present to be honest with you, but.
All right. Again, from the, this is again from the Director of Government Affairs, Policy Cannabis Control Commission. Because I asked the questions also for the planning board. I'm just gonna read this. If anything's not clear, if I stumble it, I'll just let me know. Hi, Selectman Slaven. I hope you are well. The marijuana courier license allows the establishment to pick up marijuana. And marijuana products from licensed retailers only and deliver the product to a consumer residence. The sales of local taxes are collected by the retailer and go to the city of town where the retailer is located, regardless of where the delivery is made. This is the courier. Marijuana delivery operator license allows establishments to buy wholesale marijuana and marijuana products. Warehouse them on their premises and deliver directly to the consumer residences. The sales of local taxes are collected by the delivery operator and are allocated to the city of town. Where the operator is physically located and has signed an HCA agreement regardless of where the delivery is made. These marijuana establishments are subject to the same rights and restrictions of a marijuana establishments. You may wish to, again, to consult council if you have specific questions regarding zoning and local licenses. I hope that makes it clear.
And if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, the precise pin citation, and I, uh, apologize for my misstatement earlier. Nine thirty-five CMR five hundred point zero fifty eleven C makes it clear exactly, uh, what, uh, Selectman Slaven just said. That the wholesale delivery operator does pay the retail tax, though it is categorically not the same as, uh, a. Retail. So I apologize for that misstatement earlier.
Well, that makes a big difference. That's a huge difference.
Three percent.
You've come, you've, you've calmed a little bit of my ire. I thought you were mentioning.
Yeah, that makes.
I apologize for the misstatement. I was thinking of the courier version because that's unfortunately the only application at the state level that's alive. Uh, but again, as, as Aaron and Janelle were saying, you know, the, the HCA would be the springboard to apply. And of course, the HCA itself does nothing in the way of zoning relief. Um, there are still many steps in the process as well as getting the state approval as well. So.
I'm sure everybody, I'm sure everybody here is feeling better about that.
I hope so.
Okay, uh, is there anything more to be, uh, asked of our applicants or their counsel or? Jim, you got your hand up again or is it still, still up?
Uh, just let me put my hand down. Here we go. How's that?
Okay. All right. Any more hands up? Anything else to be discussed here? Uh, this would be a vote only to authorize. The commencement of negotiations. So.
So moved.
We have a motion by Patrick and a second by Jim. Anything further?
I'd like to have a clarification of the motion. Is it to include the delivery, the manufacturing and the cultivation? All three?
Well, I think they can negotiate all three of them, but, uh, you know, they'll have to wait to get the actual license for that.
Then I would ask that you make that clear in your motion.
Yeah, yeah. I, I, I'll make my motion that they, uh, that they get to negotiate all three aspects. But, um, that, you know, that, which is fine, but it, they're not gonna probably be able to do that immediately. You're probably able to do your other stuff. Earlier or right away, but you probably won't get to, to do the things until, uh, we get out of town meeting, you know? Which isn't too far away.
Okay. Jim, you're seconding that motion? You're good?
I'm, I'm seconding the motion.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, Alan?
Yeah, again, I apologize for how long this take there and stuff, but hopefully we get this done. Alan says yes.
Okay, uh, Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Present.
Uh, myself, yes. So it's four zero one, uh, Judy being present. Uh, so our negotiators are the town administrator and, uh, Director Buckland. I would suggest, uh. Reaching out to Director Buckland and talking with him about the host community agreement, uh. And, uh, Derek will jump in as, as necessary or, or not as the case may be.
Can I ask another question?
Sure.
Is it possible to negotiate that? Cause there's nothing to really negotiate. We just need to negotiate what. Do you feel the impact fee should be? So is it possible to negotiate that be back on this meeting next week to get us approved?
Well, we usually, we usually wait until we hear from our negotiators that they're ready to go forward. So, uh. That, that's gonna be sort of up to them. Uh, certainly Director Buckland will be alerted as to what the vote was tonight. Uh, I know he's been pressing, so I don't think he's gonna be a, a problem for you in that regard.
Okay.
So. He'll, he'll be happy that we voted.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand if we can get actually an, a signed HCA. When can we, like, can we get back on the meeting? As long as we can negotiate with him quickly, are we allowed? Can we get back on the meeting?
If, if he comes to me before Thursday at three PM and says, uh, yeah, I think I've got a, an agreement here. That the, the board, uh, you know, would, would, would probably approve, then it'll go on the agenda. So we leave, we, again, we leave it up to the negotiator, uh, because the last thing I wanna do is put, put you on the agenda, have you come in and find out that there isn't really an agreement. And then it turns into a, a thing that, that doesn't get anybody anywhere. So.
And then if. I think we, we can calm a little bit of angst here. I know Ken is out of the office this week, so will not be next week's meeting.
Oh, that's right. He did take the week off. So it would be, uh, the meeting of, uh, June fourth.
May, Peter.
May.
I keep saying, I keep confusing June with May. I don't know why. I think I wanna get into summer. Um, so May fourth.
So you, so you wouldn't be there anymore? Would we have to wait again because of that?
No, no, no. What we're saying is, is the Director of, uh, Planning, Ken Buckland, uh, he's off this week. And we're actually trying to leave him alone for, for once when he's off because he needs the vacation as much as any of us do. So we would come back to it the following week, which would be May fourth, as I'm reminded, not June.
And Ken, what I'm saying is that Mr. Buckland had said that your, your term or whatever was over on the third. So does that mean that we would be, would we be pushed again because that has to be filled or something?
No, no, there's a town election on May fourth, but we meet that, that evening anyway. The results are never available before we're done with the meeting. So you will either be looking at the same five faces on May fourth or, uh. Or you will be.
You will be looking at the same five faces, yeah.
Will be the same five faces. If it goes past May fourth, it, it may be different. It may not. That's up to the voters. But I don't, uh, you know, again, uh, he's been pressing us to get this on the agenda and work on it. So I, I would imagine that your negotiations will go fairly quickly when he returns.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, appreciate it. You very much. Uh, we look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks.
You too.
Good luck.
Bye.
Okay, let me see. I gotta spin back.
Requests for placing signs on town property.
Yeah, who do we have?
I have, um, one from the Church of the Good Shepherd for.
for December 4th, Christmas, October 2nd for rummage, June 5th, 12th, or 26th for rummage. And June 5th, 12th, or 26th. And all dates are tentative and contingent on COVID-19 status and may be held outside on the lot instead of in... The application for the signs would stand, but the activity might have to be outside as opposed to inside. So the first one is for the Church of the Good Shepherd. And the application is in order. So I would recommend those four dates, or they're moving dates based on the weather, I guess.
All right. I mean, they're allowed to put them up for 30 days, so it doesn't really matter.
Yeah.
Second.
So we have a motion to approve signs by Judy, seconded by Patrick. Roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500.
Okay, the second one, they're all for the Wareham Garden Club. And the first one is the Christmas fair on Saturday, December 4th. They've asked for a banner, and they've filled out the application correctly. The other date would be the spring plant sale, Saturday, May 15th, with no rain date. And then the other date would be Saturday, April 15th. That's wrong. I don't know about that one. That's an incorrect one. So just those two. The May 15th and December 4th for the Wareham Garden Club.
Okay, that's your motion?
Yes, sir.
We have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alan. Roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes. So that's 500. Are we done with signs?
Yes.
Okay, we have some employees here.
Move to ratify hiring of the following. Stephen McMillan, a heavy equipment operator for municipal maintenance. Michael Miriam, mechanic for municipal maintenance. Thomas Glennon, seasonal deputy harbor master. Michael Hudlett, seasonal deputy harbor master. Christopher Darling Jr., seasonal deputy harbor master. Antonio Mayette, seasonal deputy harbor master. Patrick Brophy, seasonal community service officer. Lisa Duarte, seasonal community service officer. No launch operator. And that's it. There are nine of them.
Okay. Motion and a second by Jim. Any discussion on these? Okay, seeing none. Roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500. Welcome aboard for the full timers and the seasonals. And now a moment we've been anticipating. We just saw out the old. So let's, Derek, why don't you explain how we have come to this point where you're recommending that we hire Lieutenant Walter Correa to be the Chief of Police?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think they're going to let Walter into the panel soon, hopefully.
They'll let him in.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's in, or he will be.
They better let him in.
I'm probably beating this joke to death, but I was telling Walter, I knew him back when he had extra pounds on him, and I was the skinny one. So it's been about a decade. You know, but throughout the last 10 years, knowing Lieutenant Correa, which we're soon going to change that title, it's been a true honor to serve with him. As I said in the letter to the Board of Selectmen, not only is he brilliant in what he's looking forward to doing to the department, but he's one of the last few gentlemen that I actually know. And it's been, it's been an honor to work with him, and I look forward to many years. In fact, I think the way things are going, Walter's going to long outlast me here. So I'm really happy to be a part of this and look forward to, look forward to the Board ratifying this and making him Chief Correa. I couldn't be prouder.
Okay, thank you. Alan.
Well, I'm just happy with the selection and looking forward to it.
Patrick.
I love this guy. I've known him for a long, long, long time. Way back when. And he's a terrific man. He's, I don't know how he does it, but he always manages to stay calm in any situation, which I never do. So it's got that way over me. I'm glad to have him, and I think he'll be a terrific chief for us.
Jim.
No, I'm good, thank you.
Judy.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah, myself, Walter's a straight shooter, an honorable guy. He has an excellent disposition. He has the respect of his subordinates on the police department. He's always done an exemplary job, and so I would ask for a motion to hire Lieutenant Walter Correa Jr. as Chief of Police.
I move to hire Lieutenant Walter W. Correa Jr. as the Chief of Police of the town of Wareham.
Patrick beat you to it, so I'm going to give it to him, and you get the second.
Fine.
Roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes, that's 500. Now we have to figure out whether we want to pay you or not.
I move to execute...
Probably should have done that first, huh?
I move to execute the Chief of Police contract, which is actually called the Police Chief Employment Contract Civil Service.
Second.
As presented.
Okay, motion to execute the contract by Judy, seconded by Alan. Roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes. It is official. Congratulations. Let's have a round of applause for our new Chief of Police.
Thank you. Thank you, Walter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Walter.
Thank you all.
It's an honor and a privilege. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I don't know if Judy will make you wait until Monday to get your contract like she does with the people who apply to committees, but it's up to her.
Nope, it's all set to go.
Excellent.
And Chief, I'd like to thank you and Assistant Town Administrator Doreen Allen England for working on that contract and getting it done in my absence. I appreciate you all working together.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. So it's a happy day in the town of Wareham.
Be safe, Walter.
I'm sorry we couldn't do this in person, so...
Well, it might be a little something, something going on tomorrow, so we'll do that.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. See you tomorrow, Walter.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Chief. Okay, moving on. We've got town meeting article recommendations. The Chairman of the Finance Committee indicated he'd like us to bang out as many of these as we could, because he wants to go to press.
What we have left on the regular town meeting is the capital plan, the fiscal '22 budget, the EMS budget, Upper Cape Regional Tech budget, and the Wareham Pollution Control Facility Enterprise Fund.
Yep.
And I guess Derek should be speaking.
Yeah, and I think for the capital I forwarded, I think last week, that it was only the WPCF items I forwarded there, what they sent. You should have the EMS budget, our annual budget. Trying to think of the other. I can't remember, and I apologize, whether the WPCF budget got forwarded over to you. But I thought it had, but if not, I can always rectify that.
Well, the...
But that's, those are the...
The capital plan is 990,000 for WPCF through, yeah. So that would be that one. We did get the budget as well. And we got your budget.
Okay, so we've got three. So number six, why don't we do them one at a time, then? Fiscal year '22 capital plan?
I move that we recommend that to the town meeting. Recommend approval to the town meeting.
Okay.
Second.
Seconded by Alan, motion by Judy. Roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500. Next up, the fiscal year '22 budget.
As submitted, I'll move that we recommend it to the town meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Judy, seconded by Alan. Just, I do have just one question, Derek. Do you expect these numbers to change in your motion to change before we, between now and the 8th?
No, the most recent cherry sheet basically just reversed charter, charter aid and charter tuition. So I think we've got the governor's numbers for the aid, and that's what we'll move forward with. We've got, we know what we're getting from Maya for our pension, for everything like that. So really, the only, the only outstanding would be the aid. And I mean, we're getting, we're getting fairly favorable numbers, not huge jumps, but much better than when we were anticipating 10% reductions pre this current fiscal year. So I don't plan on any changes.
Okay, thank you.
And now you've forced me to jinx it, so...
Yeah, well.
As always.
It is what it is. Can we have a motion to recommend, please?
I already did.
Oh, did you? Oh, that's right. I just, so it was your motion and Alan's second, am I correct?
Yeah, correct.
Roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500. Article 7.
EMS budget, Article 8, I recommend that we move favorable action to the town meeting on...
Don't say that. It's a recommendation. Mr. Tropiano will become very upset with you.
You want the number, because I have it in front of me, but I'm just... I'm move that we
Recommend.
Recommend.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Okay, motion to recommend by Judy, seconded by Alan. Any questions? No? Roll call vote.
What was that number, Mrs. Whiteside? Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Roll call, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500. Do we have the Upper Cape number yet?
Yes, the Upper Cape is, this is actually a slight reduction. We had, I think we had 11 less kids this year. So that number is
Move that we recommend.
Second.
Okay, motion to recommend by Judy. Was that Patrick with the second?
Yes.
Okay, roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes, 500. That takes care of all the articles we put on the warrant.
The enterprise fund.
Oh, I missed one.
Yeah, number 10, the Wareham Pollution Control Facility Enterprise Fund, move recommendation.
Second.
Okay, do we have a number for that one, for the record?
I apologize. Usually I can pull that right up. I don't have it in front of me on my laptop, so... You want to hold off till next week? I don't mind. I mean, it's, I know that they vote it. Yeah, so...
Remove my second.
I'll remove my motion.
Okay, so we're still waiting on 10, which is that. And we also need to get the petitioners in to discuss the articles. So they'll be invited for next week.
Okay, then for the special, we have budget transfers, which, I don't know, Mr. Sullivan, Benny?
Right now, the one that's causing us concern is the Veterans budget, and that's not the Veterans agent. That's the payouts that we have. Before we did this budget in the prior fiscal year, even though we were going to June, it was trending down dramatically. But COVID has reversed that. We're just, we're double checking and trying to project and receive from them what they see as the number.
So you will hold off on that one?
Yeah, because if we need to transfer, it's probably about the $20,000, $25,000 range, if it holds true. But I don't want to put that on there or have you vote until I know that's more of a certainty.
Okay, how about the fund, the parking program, item two?
Yeah, there's currently a lull over in the receipts reserve for appropriation account. So everybody understands the money from onset parking does not go into the general fund. It goes into a receipts reserve for appropriation account, and only town meeting can pull out those funds.
Now, to clarify, when you say onset parking, you are talking about the sticker program, correct?
Yeah, just so everybody understands, the sticker program's a money loser for us. It's a, you know, it actually costs more in headaches and such to get that out. I think the most you've ever, we've ever brought in on is $10,000 to $11,000 annually, and that's gross. So, you know, I think there's, and I understand the confusion, but there's, there are two drastically different things. The parking kiosks is what makes money. The other one does not. It gives a quality of life issue to the residents in those areas, so... Because if you, so I'll go back on that, too, because people forget the whole thing.
Yeah, please don't...
Why is that parking program so far extended? Well, you had the initial areas where you told people, okay, you can't park in here unless you've got the, unless you've got the sticker. So what happened to all those people that were used to parking in those areas? They shuffled down to the areas they were beforehand. We're even seeing it right over the bridge in the other areas, you know, the complaints on that. So somebody that's a little bit further away, or that's further away and tells you, oh, I don't get any benefit out of this. If we yank that portion away, they'd be inundated with cars in a hot seat. So... So sorry for that little lecture.
No, it's good to remind people, because I think it's easy to confuse the two programs and think that, well, you know, you're pulling in all this money from the kiosks, and, you know, but yet, you know, you're charging for this, so on and so forth. So I think it's good to remind people what the distinctions between the two programs are, what the sources of funding are, and where the money ends up, so thank you for that.
I might ask for a little clarification. So the money from the kiosk goes into the general fund?
It does not.
Where does it go?
It goes to the receipts reserve for appropriation account onset parking.
As well as the stickers.
Yeah, correct.
Both of them do, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
This is a comment, Derek, on the kiosk parking. Doesn't a percentage of that money go to the Community Events Committee? By town meeting?
Yeah, usually about $40,000 roughly goes to...
I believe it's 45,000. Just so people understand that that $45,000 every year. And that, most of that money actually goes to onset for all the different OBA programs, just so everybody understands. So that parking money, which everybody thinks doesn't go anywhere at onset, is this substantial portion that goes right back in the community for all the summer events.
In fact, I looked the numbers up. It was 75% the last time. Went back to the onset of things.
Various events.
Yeah, various events.
I think that's a good clarifier on that, Judy. About 35,000 to 40,000 of the 45,000 Community Events Committee gets comes from the parking program. The other portions coming from the hotel motel excise. It's not 100% funded.
And just so people know that the Community Events Committee pays a fairly good part of the fireworks every year as well, which people think the town doesn't pay. Thank you.
Okay. Got that explained, so we need a motion?
Yeah.
Well, guys, you're going, you're going to want to talk about the, I just want to go over this real quick with you, though. As I said, there's approximately $411,000. Well, guys, you're going, you're going to want to talk about the, I just want to go over this real quick with you, though, as I said, there's approximately four hundred and eleven thousand dollars in the account. Uh, we're trying not to expend all that, especially when you've got an eight to ten million dollar per renovation that, uh, is a main driver of the onset parking, uh, revenue from the kiosks, but, uh, my recommendation was to, to put, uh, sixty thousand dollars into the, for the parking program, including the, uh, the, the parking bathroom attendants, the kiosks, and all the program costs. Then I'd like to do another forty thousand dollars for onset specific projects, uh, as they're, they're popping up along the way. So, for example, last time we did thirty thousand dollars into the, uh, into the basketball, pickleball and tennis courts. So it'll be a total of one hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, I was just going to ask you for the amount would be the one hundred thousand dollars to fund it?
Right.
I'll move that for recommendation.
Can I, um, is that like work on the period lighting and, and such?
Yeah, yeah, so that's why I say onset's, uh, specific, so you can use on some of the period light to get a couple more of those going, and, you know, there might even be, we're trying to get some, uh, cleanups of, uh, you know, areas like the bluffs going, and all the time we're, we're held up, so you might need to do some engineering. And I apologize, I don't have it as a straight, it's this, this, or that. Um, I just think it, it's good to have that money available, so that during the summer, especially when we're seeing some of the cost rise or something intended happens, we can, we can act pretty quickly. It's one of the, it's the most interesting thing about our form of government, is that twice a year, we get to, the residents get to make these decisions. Uh, sometimes more, but really financially, twice a year, if you will. So it's good to have the money set aside, because we're not nimble when it comes to, to money. You have to set town meeting, pull it out, get it authorized and such.
So I made a motion to, um, fund it with a hundred thousand dollars.
Second, please.
Motion by Judy, seconded by Alan, roll call vote, Judy, uh, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero, uh, any funds transfers?
Yeah, that's, um, so we've got the, the next one's the spring twenty-twenty-one capital.
Yes.
Oh, I keep skipping stuff today.
Three. Uh, so Article three, and pulling this, there's really, we have one million, two hundred twenty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-three dollars in free cash available. Uh, my recommendation would be, it's in the, uh, capital plan, as approved by the capital planning committee, is for inspectional services, replace one of the two thousand five, uh, was it the, uh, Chevy Colorado pickups? For with the, an SUV for, uh, amount for twenty thousand dollars. Uh, we have to make sure it goes within the green communities. Why are you going with a SUV? The reason why is, sometimes when they're going out and expansion, excuse me, inspections, it's, uh, it can be pretty rough on some of those work sites or getting to them. Uh, the Colorados, if you go out there, while they're, they're low mileage, we've been, uh, you'll see some black strips on there where we, our, uh, our maintenance crew have been welding patches onto them, so.
Yeah.
It's, uh, they're, they're getting eaten up pretty good. Now, the next one is, um, the next one's an important one, because I think you've seen this, uh, personally as, uh, as the board. We, we have an ACO vehicle that is much too small for the task, for a town like, uh, ours with the experience. So, um, this is a, uh, a bit of a shuffle. What my recommendation is, to purchase an animal control vehicle, and what you do is you purchase a pickup truck, and you put basically a slide in the back. Why do we have that? Well, multiple times they've gone, uh, you can see our ACO, or some of the DNR have been going to, uh, going to dog attacks, and different vicious dog incidents, and there's multiple vicious dogs there. The current vehicle does not allow for more than one dog at a time. There's been times where they've had, you know, if, if they've been lucky enough to have a nice dog, and they're going from one incident to another, the dog's sitting up front with them, which, you know, I've enjoyed in my own vehicle, but it's a little bit different when you're the, uh, the, the ACO. But this is, the setup and the proper setup with the air conditioning, with everything, is not cheap. You're probably looking at the, the pickup and the, about the forty thousand dollar range, and then to purchase, equip, and outfit that slide, is about another thirty-five thousand dollars, so that's a total of seventy-five thousand dollars. So my recommendation is to purchase that and to fully equip it. Take the, uh, Ford Econo line that they currently use, and use that to replace the weights and measures mobile that's failing as well. So, that, that would be a good vehicle for the weights and measures, we've met with Jack, gone over it. Um, his proposal was for a sixty-five thousand dollar weights and measures vehicle, so, he's not getting the, getting the new one, but all told, it's a delta of about ten thousand dollars, and getting, essentially doing a swap and getting two vehicles to, into different holes that'll work well.
So you're just recommending those two, which would be ninety-five?
Ninety-five thousand, so that would leave us with the, uh, one million, one hundred twenty-seven thousand, one hundred sixty-three dollars.
So I move for Article three, recommending the ninety-five thousand dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Alan, who knew a doggy limousine would cost so much?
It's a discussion here.
Sure.
Um, what year is the current, um, animal control vehicle?
That is a.
It's like a minivan.
It is.
Yeah, it's a Ford Transit, it's a twenty-sixteen, so when it was purchased.
That a few years ago, but I understand what you're doing now, and the second question, is the, um, weights and measure, um, are they an employee of the town or a contract employee?
Uh, we pay them a, uh, a salary, it's a, it's a small amount, and then the town gets the money back from all the, uh, all the inspections, and then we also do inspections for some of the neighboring communities, and the town gets those funds.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, it's motion by Judy, seconded by Alan, roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. Okay, next one, uh, pegged access receipts to WCTV.
Oh, transfer of available funds. We, we just did capital.
Did we?
So on Article four, transfer of available funds.
Yeah, okay.
My recommendation for this one, as you've seen, we have, uh, we have grant applications that require matching funds from the town. Sometimes you're able to do that with, uh, in-kind services, sometimes you're not, it's true, it's true cash. My recommendation is, I'd like to take this and set aside a hundred thousand dollars for, uh, for matching of future grants. It would be expended through the town administrator's office, so you couldn't just willy-nilly, um, you know, departments go after it, they have to, they have to come through the Grinch, so.
I'll make a recommendation, I'll move, I'll make a motion for, uh, funding it for a hundred thousand dollars for the ability to match grants, and the okaying of spending the fund would go through the town administrator's office.
Second, and the grants that I see coming through now, there's more matches than usual, so that's a good idea.
Yodok, uh, motion by Judy, seconded by Alan, roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim. Did Jim freeze on us? He said yes, okay, uh, Judy?
Yes.
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. So, maybe now it's time for the next one, huh?
Yes. The peg receipts.
The peg.
Yes.
Yeah.
Got to pay WCTV.
Yep, a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred seventy-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Again?
One eight seven, seven seven nine point five zero.
Thank you. I move it.
Yes, sir. I like seeing that format better when you're trying to write it down.
Yeah.
Okay, motion by Judy, seconded by Alan. Uh, and by way of explanation, this is the money that, uh, under the contracts with the cable TV providers Comcast and Verizon, uh, goes to the town and we're the conduit to pay the cable access, uh, the public access company, which in this case is WCTV, so this is something we do every six months. Uh, and it's in order to keep them going with the money that, uh, they're owed under the agreement we have with them, and through us with the cable companies. So, roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Uh.
Next one is the home rule petition that, um, Ms. Nichols brought to us three or four weeks ago, and explained at that point.
Yep.
I would, um, move recommendation.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on this one? Okay, seeing none, uh, roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Number seven, solar pilots, and this is conditioned upon, uh, whether, uh, solar fields actually go in.
And this, again, was recommended by, um, Ms. Nichols, and I recommend approv- recommend favorable, whatever it is I'm doing.
Favorable, recommend.
Yeah.
Recommend approval.
Second.
Okay, uh, any discussion? Nope, uh, Alan.
Just, uh, just a clarification, hold it, please.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, there's no figures or, um, megawatts, um, related to this article, correct? That's to be determined once the fields are actually in?
Correct.
Right, we've got, we made the agreement on system sizes of, uh, a total of, uh, fifty-two point five megawatts for, uh, for six hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so roughly it's twelve thousand dollars per megawatt.
Right, there's no, there's no figures in the contract at this point in time, that's how it's going recommended?
Right, and that's how, so my, with it, uh, the finals, it could end up being nineteen megawatts is how, you know, just when they build it out or something like that, it's usually, I haven't seen them hit the exact number yet, so, and it's never been over, so.
Okay, so we have motion by Judy, seconded by Alan, uh, roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. Uh, marijuana delivery operators bylaw, and this was the one that limited it to three, if it passes.
I'll make the motion for discussion.
Second.
Okay, uh, motion by Judy, seconded by Patrick, uh, discuss. Judy?
I, um, are you going to speak to it?
No.
Oh, well, um, you know, marijuana delivery is a reality, and, um, wherever the company is, wherever the host community is, they keep the tax revenues, whether they deliver in this town, or Rochester, or Marion, or Plymouth, or, or wherever. Um, uh, the limit of three, I, I think we handcuff ourselves, but it's better than none, and, um, unless it's amended to less than that, then there would be no, correct? We'll wait, we'll wait for the attorney, there'd be no limit unless we amend it to less than that. Because it's an as of right, just like I believe they said Middleborough was doing it, so, um, you know, I'm, I'm in favor of it, let's, let's move on, and what were we, what were we when we took the vote to, um, allow recreational marijuana, was it fifty-seven to forty-three, was that the percentage?
Correct, it was in Wareham, yes, because we, we, we beat the state average.
Look, and it's, it's, the trains already left, so we might as well, you know, stay on it and, um, get what we can out of it while we can, uh, if we wait longer and, and nothing happens, someone else is going to reap the benefit.
Correct.
Okay, uh, anything further to be said? Roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
No.
Uh, myself, yes, four one zero is the recommendation on that one. Uh, updates to FEMA floodplain bylaws?
That, we, as Alan, Mr. Slaven has explained a couple of times, we absolutely have to get this done, and as well as our surrounding communities. Um, otherwise, we're all sunk. Haha, that was pretty good. So I have a recommendation.
Second. Motion to recommend by Judy, seconded by Alan, any further discussion? Uh, roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Present.
Judy.
Yeah, uh, yes.
Myself, yes, four zero one, Jim being present, uh, let's see, wetland bylaw amendment, uh, not having the warrant in front of me, which one is this, because we have dissimilar votes on the two of them, is the first one, the, uh, Wareham Village one, or is it the?
First one is the wetland, is the Wareham Village, and the second one is the municipal one.
Okay, that's what I thought the order was.
Yeah.
Uh, so this would be on Wareham Village, uh, anything to, to be discussed on this, we get a motion?
I'll move that we recommend it.
Okay, motion to recommend by Judy, seconded by Alan.
Wait a second, whoa, whoa, I thought we were, uh, talking about, uh, um, first and then this or further study.
No.
This is the one, this is the one that questions the heights and all that in the village.
Oh, this is.
No, 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 this is a wetland one.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, I'm sorry, yes, all right, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, I was, uh, did, well, never mind, but I was busy, okay, sorry.
Okay, uh, so, I'm confused, we have a motion and a, uh, by Judy, seconded by Alan, anything further for discussion? No.
Is this onset here, are we talking onset?
No, this is, we took onset out of it.
Okay.
We, uh, because of the decree, but when we discussed it last week or the week before, we took onset out, so it's only the, what essentially would be WV one.
Yeah, we, we missed one in onset, I think, but, um, if we took it out and we, we said no, then it's no, because there is one business that would affect, or two. Um, which would be stashes and, um, what's the marina there at the dummy bridge?
Oh, Stone Bridge?
Stone Bridge.
So those two would be affected, the rest of it, like you said, is all pretty much the Cree land. Um, so it was an oversight on my part at that point in time, and I guess there's no going back, so whatever you want to do.
Well, we can't change it, because it's a by, bylaw recommendation. So I made the motion.
Second.
And second by Alan, uh, roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Uh, the next one is the wetland bylaw amendment proposal that would exempt out municipal maintenance, uh, from the local wetland bylaw in instances where they were simply doing maintenance type work, replacing things that were already there, uh, and so forth. Uh, we narrowed that one down, too, you, you recall, Jim, we narrowed the scope of that one down, because initially it said municipal projects, which to me could mean just about anything.
Right.
And, uh, would, I don't think the conservation commission liked that too much, so we brought it back, we brought it back down to a more, uh, level manner, uh, so.
That is okay.
Yeah, we'll see what happens at the town meeting.
I'll move recommendation.
Second.
Motion to recommend by Judy, seconded by Patrick, I guess, uh, roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Water pollution control facility funding requests.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, they do bring, uh, they, it basically lists what they are, they didn't include these in the, um, capital plan, so it's. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, they do bring, they basically lists what they are, they didn't include these in the capital plan, so it's fine, it's separate articles for them. Not that they aren't in the capital plan, excuse me, they just wanted to have their own articles, and it's two generators, they're using retained earnings for those, and then Article thirteen's actually a past, is the dreaded past due bill, so the Article thirteen will have to clear the nine tenths margin of town meeting, which is interesting.
Yeah, we haven't seen one of those before, have we?
No.
No.
Long time. What's the number on number twelve, please, Mr. Sullivan?
Five hundred thousand even.
Thank you so much. I'll move recommendation.
Second.
Okay, motion to recommend by Judy, seconded by Alan, roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero.
And the amount on number thirteen, Mr. Sullivan?
Eleven thousand, thirty-six dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Eleven oh thirty-six, thirty-eight?
One one zero three six point three eight.
Is it one vendor?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll move it.
Second.
Okay, motion to recommend by Judy, seconded by Patrick, roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. Additional liquor license, fifty-nine Main Street, this would be for Mr. Warren's proposed facility down at the Old Grio Lumber.
I'll move recommendation.
Second.
Motion to recommend by Judy, seconded by Patrick. Ready for vote? Roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. Additional liquor license, one seventy-six Main Street, this is also Mr. Warren, he has purchased the machine shop.
Move recommendation.
Second.
Motion to recommend by Judy, seconded by Patrick, roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. Wareham Village one liquor license district, this is the one that would allow for the creation of up to five new liquor licenses. They would be restricted to use within the village, but they could move around within the village.
Correct.
I'll make, I'll move it, move recommendation.
Second.
Okay, motion to recommend by Judy, seconded by Alan, roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes. Amendment to solar bylaw, that was a petition article, so we will have the petitioners come in next week for that one.
Okay.
So Judy, just, just a reminder, do you confirm with the office staff that we get all three of the lead signatories on the petitions?
Yes.
Let them know that there'll be time for them to explain their articles to us next week in the public.
And just to double check, we have, on this warrant, we have number one, and we have number seventeen hanging. And on the regular, we have number, number ten? And twenty-five and twenty-six. What?
Yeah, the WPCF from the usual characters.
Did we vote on that?
No, I, I was agreeing with you, Jim.
Right, okay, so, so, yeah, so we, we still have three, no, four on, no, three on that one. Because the, yeah, we have three.
Yeah, we've got ten in the two petitions, and on this one, we've got the bookends.
And I'll let, I'll let Mr. Pigeon know these, this, as soon as we finish this meeting, I'll send him our votes.
Yep, that would be very helpful. He's, he's on, but it sure will be easier.
Yeah, no, I'll send it to him.
Okay, give me a second here so I can scroll back up, because I'm on my phone, because it's time for me to throw the printer in the trash. Okay, any other town business that recently anticipated forty-eight hours, and I'm gonna bring up something here myself, but I'll start with Alan.
No.
Patrick.
Nope.
Judy.
No.
Jim.
No.
I've got the one thing, we, we received some outreach from the Massachusetts Audubon Society. They have, I believe, an option to purchase along with the land trust, the Great Neck Golf Course property. And one of the things that they've reached out to us on is the possibility of the town partnering with the two of them in this acquisition, to the extent that the town would be applying for one of these municipal vulnerability program grants, which provides money for coastal resilience types of things. You can use them for different purposes, you can use them for infrastructure, you can use them for land acquisition, so on and so forth. And, and my big concern here is, of course, that if the, if the town gets in and accepts money through our ownership of the Little Harbor Beach itself, then we will, if we apply state money to that, then we will lose our residence-only beach, and it will become a beach for everyone. And going back in time, this is exactly what happened to the Minute Forest Boat Ramp down in front of me in the late nineties, the harbor master at the time applied for, received, and used three hundred thousand dollars in state money, and lo and behold, what used to be a residence-only boat ramp, so that people in Wareham who had boats could trailer their boat down there, launch it, find a spot at eight o'clock on a Saturday morning in the summer without too much trouble, that all went away, because if you didn't get there by six thirty, you're out of luck. And they're parking willy-nilly all over the place, so.
Can we give them the money back now, Peter?
Yeah.
I think I suggested that before the turn of the millennium, and unfortunately, it didn't work out. But nonetheless, that's, that's the big concern here with partnering with them. The reason I'm bringing it up under forty-eight hour business is that they've, the deadline for applying for one of these MVP grants is very early next month. And I just don't think we have the time to, to try to iron it out so that we don't screw up the residence-only beach. But this, you know, even though theoretically it's up to me to put something like this on the agenda, I wanted to, to poll the board at least, get a sense of what the board wanted to do before I tried to respond, so I'll start with Alan.
Since I'm around a lot, I've had people talk about this since it came up. I haven't really had time with this, the idea of converting it into a recreation walkie area, I'd be a lot happier if the Audubon, et cetera, was gonna say, well, we'll take, say, fourteen of the holes, leave the golf course as it is, and then turn around and take three or four holes and do something. That would be the max, and I even consider that way there. That golf course has been around a long time. I go by there all the time, going to Little Harbor. I'll see grandparents with their grandkids learning how to play golf. I'll see people, unfortunately, my age, who don't move very well anymore. You know, men, all women, they love the golf course because it's easy, you know, you don't even have to have a car, you know, you have to have a, a electric cartifile, you can walk it, it's level and everything else. I can't believe that we would turn around and help this with the residents all through that area and through that whole area of Wareham to lose that golf course, it's well-used. And I'm gonna make a suggestion, basically, that I think the town of Wareham should consider trying to buy the golf course themselves and, and do something a little different with it, because I, if we have to turn around and lose that beach because of the, what they want to use the parking for from Audubon, et cetera, and it becomes a wide open to everybody, I don't think I can run fast enough for the residents who would want to kill me. That's the only beach that we have for town residents, really, that is private. It's really well taken care of, municipal maintenance does go through every couple of days and takes care of the seaweed and everything else. But you can almost walk a mile out in that water there and not drown, you know, because it is low, it, it stays very low for a long time, kids love it. It's a great place, and you know, our residents really want it. I'm not willing to give that up for anybody. Thank you.
Okay, Patrick.
Yeah.
What are your thoughts about this?
Um, well, I'm, I'm not willing to give this place up at all, obviously, I live out here. And, you know, it's just down the street. I really hate to see the golf course go, just so you know. Lots of other people, lots of people have been playing on that course for a long, long time, but apparently, they've tried to sell it and have been unsuccessful. And, you know, the Audubon, you know, has got an agreement, so they get to do what they want. I just do not want to see us giving up residence-only beach under any circumstances. Simple as that.
Thank you. Jim?
Mine has more to do with utilizing municipal vulnerability grant funding for something that wasn't really mentioned very much in, or at all, the golf course and municipal vulnerability plan and study. I think those, we should really target the infrastructure and you know, the sewer water pollution pump houses and, and things like that, and, and focus on that. Again, I, I'm gonna say that we don't have a lot of, an active recreation of that sort in town, we have Bay, what is it, Bay Point over there in onset? And Little Harbor, some things could be done. I'd like to see it continue as it is, if, if something could be done in that aspect, and again, it, it doesn't have to be passive recreation, it could still be active recreation and a combination of passive. And we might be able to do something there, and you don't have to connect the parking of that property with the beach whatsoever. I mean, that's someone else's suggestion.
The golf course property, Mr. Muneys, the golf course property backs up into Little Harbor itself.
It, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that you grant them any access to the beach.
But it grants them access to the harbor.
That's, that's a, that's a bay there, and the harbor is separate than the beach. All right, so, again, I'm, I'm not in favor of using MVP funding, grant funding for, that's it, period.
Thank you. Judy?
I am absolutely not in favor of the town joining up to remove the one fun and for old people and young people, I mean, that golf course is just a great recreational place for the residents of the town and their friends and visitors. Absolutely, under no circumstances should we partner to allow access to Little Harbor, because, you know, it, it is the only residence-only beach, and I'm, I'm not willing to give that up, period.
Okay. Yeah, I, I spoke earlier about my concern that this was, you know, Tempest Snob round two, if we do something here, and you know, apparently, at the, at the time, Tempest Snob was, was sort of taken over. There wasn't a lot of thought to given, given to it, but, you know, from that experience, we should learn, and that's why when, when the Audubon reached out, they, you know, with the dead, with the quick deadline, I wanted to bring it up under forty-eight hour business. If the board would like to authorize me to just send a quick note that, you know, the consensus of the board was, was not to support an MVP grant at this time for the reasons that you folks have given, I'm happy to do it.
Well, but it needs to be specifically that the town is not going to join in, in partnership.
Right.
And I'll second Jim's motion.
Yes, because we've got, Mr. Chairman, we've got, we're working on an MVP action grant for downtown flood control slash Riverwalk. We're working on MVP action plan for Swift Beach improvements. And we've got coastal resiliency grant for Saltworks Generator Platform with, through the WPCF, and I would hate for us to lose those opportunities over something that maybe necessarily doesn't, doesn't, doesn't connect as well as it should.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right on.
So we have a motion by Jim and a second by Judy. Roll call vote, Alan.
Yes.
Patrick.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Judy.
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. Okay, town administrators report.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, getting into town administrators report, should we maybe get a representative of the Board of Selectmen, my, myself engaged with Mass Audubon on this to try and start, start, you know, throwing around potentially some ideas?
I can do it.
Yep, Jim beat you to it.
Time.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Jim is all yours.
Hope I didn't disappoint you, Mr. Sullivan.
No. I, I am rarely disappointed nowadays. All right, that's perfect. The other item sort of goes back to where we were before with the marijuana delivery. I think we need to, the board is very concerned about a process for HCAs for, for the different types of setups. We have not created one. I don't think we should hold up these other folks, but we had a really great applicant before, Ms. Kennedy, that came with a different type of project with social equity, who I, I think she's interested in this. And I want to make sure that, you know, it's really hitting the, really the Wareham residents and such that, that had the experience of the social equity program. We're, the reason why we're, we're available in one of the areas is because of what's happened in, in this community, so we want to make sure that you know, that, that our folks are getting a shot at this. So how do you want to set it up? How do you want to go forward? Because there really needs to be something, I mean, we, you were asking for financial back, the financial backers and everything for growing operations, and we just, we really moved forward on, on these pretty quickly.
Holy crap.
Somebody's got a microphone on, I think they're talking in the background.
So I'd love, I'd like to see how we have it set up, so I know what I'm, I'm talking about with the, with the applicants and such, and what they, they need to bring forward, and there's not an undue delay. So I, I don't know if there's any input from the board on that, or what your thought process is.
So what is it you're looking for, Mr. Sullivan? Sort of a, a process kind of thing?
Yeah, because these are in effect retail licenses, when it comes down, that, that's what I heard tonight, that it's in effect a retail license, and we're getting the retail tax out of it, right? Is that, I think, yeah, because that was my big concern, that it was just the that it was just the impact fee. But if there's gonna be three of these, we need to set up the process for them, how, how do you want to do it?
Would the board like me to work with Derek initially, just to get it started, since I do it at the state level now?
I think that would be a great idea, you clearly have the greatest knowledge base, other than maybe Mr. Sullivan.
Well, I have the basic, what, I bring more than anything else, is I have the access to the Cannabis Control Commission, so whatever we do, we're not gonna run afoul of the rules.
Yeah, good.
Okay, does that, does that get you started, Mr. Sullivan?
Yeah, I think so, because I don't want to hold these folks up, they're obviously frustrated, we're frustrated as well, and we just want to make sure we're doing the best possible thing for the community.
Okay, well.
Again, that's, I don't know how you want to handle it, do we want to put out an open, because I'm gonna guess we're gonna get maybe a few applicants, but Ms. Kennedy was on the call tonight.
Yeah, and again, I thought she was still affiliated with Mr. Goines, and it turns out she wasn't, so, Jim?
So how many, how many cannabis businesses in town have put in for delivery?
Well, this, this, I mean, they're not, this is.
The trade route?
He wouldn't be doing delivery, he would be doing courier, I believe. Isn't that correct, Derek?
Yeah, I don't have the application from me. I heard that there's somebody that wanted to go, and it was from bringing business to business, basically, was that, was that the new courier?
No, I thought courier was in association with, with, with an existing retail license, where the delivery is somebody doing a wholesale to the consumer, you know, retail-like, but not called retail.
Correct.
So the courier stuff would be separate and apart, so in, in terms of, if, if town meeting passes this article to limit delivery to three, that would not impact the courier numbers. And, you know, frankly.
Like, the delivery, you're allowed to purchase. Allowed to purchase a pri- Like, the delivery, you're allowed to purchase, allowed to purchase a product and hold it on at your site and, and, and move it from there.
Correct.
Courier has to go pick it up from the retail dealer, or possibly a manufacturer, I'm not sure, and deliver it.
Um, Alan, do you mind if I read out what, I'm sorry, Jim?
No, go ahead, read it out.
Yeah, so this is what Alan got before from, uh, Matt Cola. The marijuana courier license allows the establishment to pick up marijuana and marijuana products from licensed retailers only, and deliver the product to a consumer's residence. So they're basically, if I'm thinking, they're basically the grub hub of marijuana.
Yes, they are.
Yeah, so.
Oh, I.
I always relate it back to food, so.
Food's good.
Well, I'm just wondering, how does the licensing work for that? So I decide I want to be a marijuana courier. Uh, can I strike deals with all three retail establishments and, and go to each one of them and, and then go out and deliver? Uh, can the, can the retail establishment set up their own courier operation, or does it have to be incorporated separately?
I think the courier is done separately.
I think maybe separately, but it's, it's an expensive thought, because I believe they need to have two staff in the vehicle, you need to, you can only have a certain amount at a time, it's a real expensive process, so the margin.
It's like having a, it's like having a, it's like having a Brink's truck, for God's sakes.
Uh, yeah. But that's what it is, actually.
It is?
It's firstly that, you're gonna be carrying money and everything, a lot of them.
And this is, um, this is my, so, so the next part is the marijuana delivery operator license allows establishments to buy wholesale marijuana and marijuana products, and that's just warehouse them on their premises and deliver directly to consumer residences.
Correct.
So, so I, it sounds like the operation we talked about tonight, they might have to buy from other places, but once they're up and running with their manufacturing, maybe they'll be their own product that they're, they're delivering?
Yeah, they can do both. Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what, that, that's the program that they put together for minorities, is that particular delivery program.
Okay.
So, I mean. Yeah, and this is what I was trying to get at a month and a half ago, and I, I talked about the process that we have, um, you know, application, and who they go through, and the date of the initial, um, contact with the town related to an application or, or interest to do business in the town, and the process we go through. I believe I understand what Mr. Sullivan's saying, like, how do we decide who's gonna get it or this or that? Um, well, I mean, um, it, it seems that you're gonna get three percent sales tax, no matter who it is. They have to be social equity for the first three years. Um, there's a big question mark on whether we can utilize the impact fee or not. Some say it might go away, and some we don't know. One of those things, we don't know, we don't know at this point in time. Um, but maximum would be five years anyhow. And, um, um, I guess you can also renegotiate that part of the contract throughout the first five year period. Um, so, you know, however you'd like to proceed, move forward on this, it's just, um, we should do it quicker than not if we're going to do something.
Right. I think they gave us a business plan, which we wanted from other folks. What we did last time was try and get as many folks in the door. But this isn't the same license, and that's not the same spirit of it, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Okay, so, uh, going forward, I think, I, I agree, we should, we should consider, number one, the, um, the Goines that we had, uh, tonight, um, Turtle, Turtle, whatever the name is, I apologize.
Turtle Cove.
Think about two, two or three.
Yeah, well, we'll leave you, you and Alan to, to mull it over and come back to us, I guess, and talk about the process, and we'll go from there. And of course, you know, the town, town meeting vote has something to do with it, too.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, and I, and I'm glad we're going through this, and I understand it's other, a lot of times it's other people's monies and, and try and get set up, but that's, you know, it's, um, read, reading their, their resumes, they're, they're pretty impressive people. So it sounds like they've done well, and they've, they've got a, they've got some money for this, because it's not cheap at any level.
Yeah. Okay, uh, we'll, we'll come back to this. Um, anything else, Derek?
Uh, no, I think you, you all know, uh, my feelings and how, how much I appreciate, uh, each and every one of you. So, thank you very much. That's on a personal level. So, thank you.
Thank you, Derek.
Thanks.
Derek.
Uh, let's see, liaison initiative reports, Alan?
I'll make it very quick, we're all tied, it looks like we're falling asleep here. Uh, the American Recovery Program Act, uh, I've got a seminar tomorrow with MMA, uh, to get better ideas of what we should be doing, where we should be, as this money starts to come through, and I'll try and give everybody the information when I get done with the meeting tomorrow. That's it.
Thank you. Uh, Patrick?
Yeah, I'm gonna skip this tonight.
Jim?
Um, I, I would just, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna pass.
Judy?
Um, the only thing I'd like to say is that I appreciate the fact that Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Slaven regularly forwards us the information that he gets from either the state or Serpette or whatever. We are very, very current on the information that he is acquiring.
Yep, thank you. Uh, I don't have anything. Uh, we do have a couple of sets of minutes.
We do. Um, I move the approval of March thirtieth, twenty twenty one, and April sixth, twenty twenty one. And just so that you know, Mr. Um, Muniz was correct, his name wasn't where it should have been, but it is now.
It is.
Yep.
Okay.
Thank you for catching that.
Did, did you somehow demote Mr. Muniz?
No, what, what happens is, um, the office staff sometimes takes the vote and just cuts and paces, instead of, you know, proofreading. And when I was proofreading it, I didn't, I didn't catch it, and I apologize.
Okay. Well, now that you've got Mr. Muniz on the record, so that's your motion, can we have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, motion to approve minutes by Judy, seconded by Alan, uh, roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Okay, that leaves, uh, one last thing to do.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
A motion to adjourn by Alan, seconded by Judy, uh, fairly lengthy meeting tonight, and that's probably how it's gonna be the next couple of weeks, and that's the way it is. So, roll call vote, Alan?
Yes.
Patrick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Myself, yes, five zero zero. Good night, Wareham, be safe, uh, continue to mask up and protect yourself.
See you next week.
Night, all.